Good evening. I call to order the September 26, 2016, regular meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone who's with us tonight, and I will ask you to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Minera?
Here.
Mr. Gomes? President Copeland-Dansby?
Present.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, and I am recommending that we pull the first resolution. I recommend this to allow further collaboration with our partners, and I would like to see this considered at a later date.
Is there a second? Do we do a voice vote, or all in favor indicate...I'm sorry?
Voice vote.
A roll call.
Sorry.
Okay. Please call her.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Aye. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special public meeting August 12th, the regular meeting September 12th, and the special meeting September 12th, 2016. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Committee reports. Mrs. Hoffman is Chair of the Policy Committee. Please present the September 12th, 2016 Policy Committee Meeting Report.
Sure. We have quite extensive notes here, so I'm going to submit them as written.
Awesome. Are there any questions, comments? Mrs. Bolton is Chair of the Finance Committee. Please present the September 20th, 2016 Finance Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I submit them as written, and hope for their approval.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. Bolton, on behalf of the Audit Committee, please present the September 20th, 2016 Audit Committee Meeting Report.
Also, I submit them as written.
Are there any questions or comments? On behalf of the Board, I will present the September 21st, 2016 Committee of the Whole Meeting Report, and I present it as written. Are there any questions or comments? We need a voice vote to accept the committee reports as written. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Tonight's presentation will be about the 2015 SOAR Award for High Progress, and I'm going to turn over to our Superintendent for introductions.
Thank you, President Dansby. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Bobby Moore up to the podium. He is Director at Batel for Kids, and he is here to present an award to one of our great principals, Beth Schnell, from Dater Montessori. So I'd like to invite Beth up also, and we're going to try to take pictures after the award.
Thank you. As Senior Director of SOAR at Batel for Kids, it's our honor to come and recognize outstanding achievement and outstanding growth by one of your elementary schools. And just again, to put this in context, last year during the 14, 15 into the year, the data was supposed to be released like in September, October, and OD released it very late. So as Batel for Kids, we were not able to give the awards during the school year last year. So we gave the superintendents and principals a choice. So we wanted to make sure we got a chance to recognize in front of the Board and in front of the public what great accomplishment that happened in one of your buildings. So with great pleasure, we have a framed certificate here for 2015 Award for High Progress, and a banner that can actually hang in the school for all your parents and children and staff to be very proud of, because this meant during that school year, it was one of the top 10 buildings in our SOAR collaborative of over 300 buildings and 100 districts in our program.
That's awesome.
So, great job. Mary, if you'd like to come up and hold the banner with the principal.
Yes, maybe we could do it over here to get our board members in and hold it across the table there.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so you're in front.
Congratulations.
One more.
Here we go.
All right.
All right.
Beth, let me get one to be ready.
Awesome. Congratulations. We love good news. Do board members have any questions or comments related? Thank you so much. Does anyone have any kudos? Okay. Mrs. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, I have two retirements to present to you. Both are civil service personnel, staff members, and I would like to recognize Donald Silver and Lillian Stallworth Lee, and thank them for their service to the children of our district and wish them well in their retirement.
Thank you. Congratulations on those retirements. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker will have three minutes, and Mrs. Wagner on the end will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the lower podium to speak. Our first speaker will be Lisa Hyde Miller, followed by Michelle Dillingham. The lower podium, please. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
The purpose of Toni Furhead and I, the purpose of being here tonight, is the need for food on non-school days. A little girl in 1970 through 1973 who attended Washington Park Elementary believed that mayonnaise and two slices of bread was a great meal, a relief that when her mother didn't eat and her two brothers and her ate, that mom was just trying to lose weight. I was that little girl in 1970 through 1973, until my dad came back from Vietnam, and then we had a rail mills and a house in St. Bernard. Childhood Food Solution began its work in 2005 in 45225 zip code that includes North Fairmount, Millville, Roehill, Villages of Roehill Apartments, which is currently the 10th ports of the 1,000-plus zip codes in the state of Ohio. The need responds to the food gaps left by federal programs, and the SNAP benefits runs out well before the end of the month, and they run out a lot quicker, the 180 days when there are no school meals available. Just looking at the Villages of Roehill where I work, from June 13th through August 12th of 2016, the USDA Free Lunch Program provided by Hole Again, provided 2,205 meals just in 2 and 1/2 months. Childhood Food Solution passed out 3,521 sacks of food, a total of 5,726 meals in the Villages of Roehill Apartments just in the past summer. Our Summer Break Campaign delivered 8,000 sacks of groceries and children in different neighborhoods across the city of Cincinnati in food insecure neighborhoods. Now, the struggle came when we supported the food pantries, but found that they only provided food to 25% of the children, and the summer food programs was reaching even less. A big struggle is the neediest families lacked transportation to get to the food pantries, and so we decided to put sacks, Toni and I, of groceries in the hands of the children at school and on non-school days for the weekends and during the summer. Let me share a couple stories with you real quick. Teenage boys ages 13 to 16, every day coming into the community center where I work, asking for breakfast bars, granola bars, or a piece of fruit because they missed the weekend sacks that we provided for 11 years through Childhood Food Solution at Roehill School. July 8, 2016, the Cincinnati Inquirer story. Angela Green sits on her porch watching her two great-grandchildren playing on the lawn. To her left is eight-month-old Elijah sitting in a stroller observing his great-grandmother. It's a normal day for Green, who helps support her 27-year-old grandson and eight-year-old great-grandson during the day, and she also babysits two other great-grandchildren. It'll probably be hard work for some people, she says, but it comes natural for me. Food bags provided by Childhood Food Solution is a good service for Green, who lives in subsidized housing and survives on Social Security, taking care of three great-grandchildren. "I don't have the means with a fixed income to buy these things," she said, "but these are the things that we give to the children, and they like it." Toni Furhead and I and Angela Anno, we serve children during the summer months, the winter months, winter breaks, spring break, and the last two weeks of school during the school year, providing children with a sacks of filling and non-perishable food. So thank you for your time. We pray that this be duplicated across our wonderful city of Cincinnati, across the state of Ohio, and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Dillingham, followed by Gianna Martin.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Michelle Dillingham, and I'm here on behalf of the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition. You might have noticed today, Cincinnati Inquirer, page A11, I wrote an op-ed supporting issue 44, excuse me. But in any case, tonight I'm here on behalf of the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition. We are a coalition of parents, community, faith, labor organizations, civic organizations, and concerned citizens who are committed to ensuring every child has access to a public school system that provides an equitable and quality education and a positive learning environment. We work towards this goal by supporting the Community Learning Center model in every Cincinnati public school, as it is a proven path to achieve the full promise of education for all children. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the Walk-In. You might have remembered us back in February. This is a national movement to draw attention to the need for fair funding, proper funding for public education. The Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition is proud to affiliate with a national group called AROs, the Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools. We had a walk-in in almost every school back in February, and this time we're doing it again, October 6th. This is a walk-in to uplift and talk about and engage about the positive things happening at Cincinnati public schools. I want to draw your attention, there's three schools in particular that we're encouraging the media to visit, and that is Taft Elementary. They're going to have a red carpet and clap-in for their students. At Fairview Clifton German Language School, they have a special program planned. Rosalind Condon Elementary has a special parent-student event happening. Not to say that other schools aren't having their own wonderful things going on around the walk-in, but please note those three. I haven't sent out a press release yet, but if board members are interested in being at a particular school, I'd love to add you to our press release. Please contact me. I'm about to hand these flyers and distribute them to you when I leave the podium. There's a way to get in touch with me on there, and I'd love to include you at whatever school you choose to be at for the walk-in. The other thing I want to just talk about is the ESSA meeting, Every Student Succeeds Act. It's a renewal of the federal act, and in its latest iteration in December, it turned over a lot of power back to the states to decide how they wanted to manage public education policy. And so right here, Community Action Agency on September 29th, 5:30 to 7:30, there will be a stakeholder meeting. We really want parents and community to come out and talk to those who are listening from the Ohio Department of Education about what they'd like to see in public education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gianna Martin, followed by Carmen Berks.
Oh, yeah, I can reach it. Sure. Hello, my name is Gina Martin. I am lead conductor for Frederick Douglass of the Allegiance Project Walking School Bus. Our program is very vital, and I am speaking to you as a parent, not a conductor. This program is very vital to our kids. I've been walking my kids since they've been in the world. My oldest is 27, my youngest one is 11, and I still walk her to school. It's the parents in the neighborhood that actually need us. They have to be at work before school starts sometimes. They have multiple kids that they can't get dressed all at one time to bring a couple of kids to school. This program helps the community. This program helps the school. It takes down, it lowers attendance. It lowers where they're not late for school every day because they have to walk by themselves. It's dark, they're walking to school by themselves. In the afternoon, they're either being bullied on, or they run across any number of crimes going on. I mean, the school was locked down a couple of weeks ago because somebody got shot on Gilbert, and the principal would not allow any of the children to be released until an adult or a parent came to get them. But then there are those ones, their parents might have been still at work, that didn't have a way home. Here's where we come in, with our safety net. When they step out of their homes into our lines, we have them from the time we have them until we get them to school. And the same thing when we take them home. We want to make sure they get home safely without being run across the street and risk getting hit by a car because people aren't watching what they're doing. Or, like I say, running across a drug dealer or meeting people on the streets that are bad vibes. I mean, people get kidnapped and snatched every day. With our safety net, we love the work we do. We just want to get back to doing what we were doing. We just really like y'all's help and support with this, because it's very important. It's good for the neighborhood. We haven't had an accident or anything, as long as those babies are with us. We've gone over every scenario possible to prevent that from happening. I'm just asking, please let us get back to work. Our kids need it. The parents is very vital for them. Parents, grandparents, aunt, uncle, whoever's raising kids, all of them have problems. And we're just one step to at least one solution to that problem. They don't have to worry about how their kid's going to get to school and how they're going to get back home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers are Carmen Berks and Desiree Williams.
I'm a little taller than Miss Gina, so I'm going to pull this up a little bit. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Carmen Berks, and I am the Program Director for the Allegiance Project Walking School Bus Program. And I come before you very humbly today, and because of that, I'm going to start my three minutes off with a scripture, if I may. The scripture comes from the Book of Esther, and it's Esther, Chapter 4, and it's verse 14. And it says, "For though, for if thou altogether holdest thy peace at this time, then shall their enlargement and deliverance arise to the Jews from another place. But thou in thy father's house shall be destroyed, and who knoweth whether thou art come to this kingdom for such a time as this?" And I say to you, it's going to be very hard. I'm very emotional about my work, and I believe that I was put here on this earth for such a time as this. And what that is to me is the importance of getting these children in our very vulnerable communities safely to school every day, on time, to say the Pledge of Allegiance. The reason why I named the program the Allegiance Project Walking School Bus Program is, one, because the Pledge of Allegiance says, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So this is something that is, it's in my heart, and I know that it's in everybody's heart. I don't think that there has been any wrongdoing on the part of anybody from my project, our project, from CPS. I think that we have gotten caught in some type of political something that I have no idea as to what it is. The stories that my conductors have come and shared with you, they're from their heart. The people who do this work have a heart to do it, and they believe in this, and they believe in their schools, their kids, and their communities. I got up this morning, and on the news, there was a double shooting in Walnut Hills. And what I saw to myself was, as the police cars were going, and they had the stuff taped off, I said to myself, "I wonder how many kids are going to have to walk by that to get to school today?" I didn't know the answer. The challenge comes from the fact that when children are experiencing trauma, they don't have the capacity to learn. So when the Ohio Board of Education, they're talking about this test and that test and everything, it doesn't give our kids a fair shot, because we have not created that safe cycle for them to get to school, for their brain to be able to have that capacity to learn. So my three minutes is up. I thank you for this opportunity. I just, I'm not sure what's going on. I have heard some chatter that perhaps the grant funds have been released, or that they're in the process of being released. If there is any type of update that could be provided, I have conductors who have parents that call them daily.
Thank you, Ms. Berks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next and final speaker is Ms. Desiree Williams.
Hi, I'm Desiree Williams. I am a conductor of the Allegiance Project, but I also am a parent of a seven-year-old and a three-year-old who just started school. To answer Ms. Carmen's question about the double homicide that, well, I can't say it was a homicide because they're in critical condition, it's over a dozen kids that walk past there. Myself and my two children, along with three other children, walk past there every day, and that's the way to get to school. And it's also a handful of students that live right across the street from the bank that we walk to school. If we was up and going on, the thing that we're asking is for y'all's support and for y'all to help us with this. Like Gina Martin said, that we are the safety nets. We are someone that could come to, we're like second parents to those kids. I get asked every day from the neighborhood kids, "When are we going to start walking back?", because they love us. They look at us like big sisters, someone they could come and talk to and just provide in. I have two children that I still walk to school on a daily basis, because their mother can't walk them to school because her youngest child got sick with SIB. So she has to stay home, and some days she cannot go to school. So I'm just asking if y'all could just help us out for our children, for our babies. That's what we call no more our babies. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Pat Neil Miller, who is our Director of Family Community Engagement, to give us an update related to the Allegiance Project Walking School Bus Program.
Good evening, Board and guests. We have been working diligently to try to get some resolution to the Walking School Bus Project. We submitted all of our documentation and requirements in August. We have consistently contacted them either by phone or by email requesting status update. At the time that we completed our information, we were not given any timeline as to when they would, we would receive any notification. As of last Monday, I contacted both the NIJ, their supervisor, and I also followed up with an email, and I have not received any response back from that information. So at this time, we do not know what the status is of the program, and I understand how important it is to the community, and we're doing everything that we can to try to get some resolution to this. Unfortunately, the district is unable to make that decision. It has to come from the Department of Justice.
Very well, thank you. Where are we? Okay. On behalf of the Board, I will present, I would like to present a revised resolution for Board consideration. And so I am presenting, I'm sorry. Oh, we do, yeah. So we need a 48-hour waiver, because it is a revised, there are some revisions, and so do I need a motion for a 48-hour waiver?
I'll move for 48-hour.
Is there a second? Ms. Wagner, please call her all.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Aye. Thank you for that, Ms. Bolton. I'm going to present a resolution authorizing the administration to enter into an operating agreement with Phelan Leadership Academies, and I'm looking for a second. Any discussion, any indoor comments? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Aye. Superintendent Ronan, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. And I'll have to ask it to be put up on the screen. You know, a picture's worth a thousand words. So yesterday, I was at Walnut Hills High School for the dedication of the new tennis complex. There's a picture of it, and it is called the Tony Trebek Tennis Complex. Could we move to the next? Thank you very much. He is actually a Walnut Hills graduate who, from 1948, who won the state championship three years in a row, a retired veteran. He was unable to attend because he's about 91 years old. He lives in Florida, but they were able to call him up on the phone, and he was truly honored. And then the alumni, some of who were up in years, actually played the Walnut Hills Boys and Girls Tennis Team. Last year, the alumni won. This year, I did not stay till the end, so I don't know if the alumni beat the young people again or not. But the courts are very beautiful. They, the Walnut Hills Foundation undertook a project to raise money to improve the courts, and it truly is a lovely complex. So I do want to thank the Walnut Hills Alumni Association for their vision and generosity for fixing up the courts that really were in great need of repair, and they did it without having to use district funds. So we are very grateful, and it was a lovely event, and they served strawberries and cream just like they do at Walnut. So it was a lovely touch.
Very nice.
So thanks to Deb Hellman and the foundation.
Very nice. Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Aye. I want to take a step back. I just realized and recognized that we have folks in the audience who are related to Phelan academies, and so if you are, I'm going to ask you to please stand so that we can recognize your attendance with us tonight. so that we can recognize your attendance with us tonight.
I came from Indianapolis.
Very nice. Thank you for taking the trip from Indy to be here tonight, and it's very nice to meet you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Second. Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
President Copeland Dinsby?
Aye. Are there any inquiries or updates? Are there any assignments?
I have one.
Okay.
I would like to make an assignment to the Policy Committee.
Thanks.
That we, that the Policy Committee consider strengthening the accountability measures for our district-sponsored charter schools. Similar to the additional language in the resolution, but so all of our district-sponsored charter schools are under the same accountability measures. That's the intent.
Do you accept that? Excellent. Thank you. Anything further? Having no other business come before the Board, I consider the meeting adjourned.